I just got one.
All right. We're going to call this, uh, emergency meeting eighteen July twenty eighth. Eighteen July twenty twenty five seventeen hundred hours, uh, City Hall on Nineteenth Street, Florida, Texas seven nine two five two. Mr. Johnson, would you just like to be on the, uh, for a moment?
While we come to you in our, my humblest, and may I ask you to assist us in making good decisions that will, that will bless our town and, and, and bless you or bless us. And, uh, we ask that you guide us, give us the right words to say to your dignity to all people, and that we will, we will revise them, address them, they need to be addressed by us. This is your thing, it's here.
Johnson, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, we're going to start this off with Mary's comments, um, I had to change this because I've been on here and it's not fair to you guys.
I know.
Okay, okay, good deal. Uh, just, Mr. Wilson started on Wednesday, welcome, Mr. Wilson. Um, the day that we hired him, we put all power back into that office. Uh, the way I read, the, the way I read the, um, the change, addressed the last administrator when her name was no longer on it. All power that's invested back to you, the council hired you, and I will support that. And one hundred percent, you have every power that that office has ever had, and everybody runs through you. We don't have any employees, anything like that, Mr. Wilson has everything that runs through. Mr. Wilson, if we anything, do we need to, we need to take some powers that work? I don't, I don't think that we do, we look, we looked at it, that was listed by name, but when that, that name was no longer there, go right back to give ours a start. Uh, I would ask that, an idea to, we've all covered outside the lines when we went to have him, I would ask that, when you're, when you're doing your assigned duties, which, with your departments, that you're responsible for, whatever you have to schedule, we have to schedule through him, these schedules are too, too broad and inappropriate things, and, uh, I'm, I'm horrible to get in phone calls and I, there's personal problems. If we circumvent him now, we're going to circumvent him the rest of the time, he is ready for the responsibility to talk today, and, and as far as I'm concerned, if the law is in your court, and, and we know you're going to make a good one shot. After that, I don't have anything else, uh, to go off on, on that, I just, welcome, and, uh, speaking with you the last couple of days, I really enjoyed speaking with you. I didn't have anything, you said, I know you're not saying that, so.
Yeah.
What kind of other comments, I only have one, was there another one out there that anybody else had one? All right, looks like Amber Crowder, you're on, yeah.
Okay, so, we all know that we have a lot of work around, I do a lot of it in Oklahoma, and I can see, like, um, programs that they put into place and everything. They had comment on Facebook a couple of months with the storm sirens. I'm at home all the time, and then I ask for any body of hurt or anything, somebody's been a couple of years, so I don't really know when the last time they were tested. Um, in weather for Oklahoma, they have a storm shelter registration program, which I have a paper before here, I'm going to give it to you guys, um, but it helps, um, like, uh, emergency management is able to locate the shelters again, everybody left in our, in our area or wherever, I'm just kind of, hers or whatever, you know. Um, but it allows residents, and if they need to put down where their shelter's at, if it is in the ground, the safe room, the basement, or across space or whatever. Um, I know some people use the gym, I mean, that's obvious, you know, but I mean, there's other people in town that have these shelters, and they have the horrific of the floodings, you don't want anybody to trap in a shelter in flood or whatever, you know. But anyways, see the emergency management person that needs, you all said first?
Yeah, Lily is emergency management.
Hopefully that, I mean, you two seem, it's voluntary, it's not mandatory, you said that it is voluntary, so anybody must have.
Probably a mutual shame, goes to the fire department and Dale, and I agree with that. Mr. Wilson, you probably, it's like a copy of it as well, I think, because that, you know. Okay, we're going to go into, nothing else, right, that's it, we're going to go into new business, uh, I guess the first one we're going to discuss will be, uh, discussing impossible action on coroner and engineering services contract, review of previous approved coroner and engineer service budget, consideration of proposed price increase from twenty thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, council discussion and possible action to approve amended contract.
Yeah, that, that, we're going to get, uh, Victor Pierce, and Brian and I met with this engineer the other day, and wonder if we at least also remember him. Nice young man, very nice young man, uh, he, I, I, he, I'm not sure how we got him here. We kind of came in after the fact, but I think that maybe Paula had contacted him to come in.
He was Lisa, Lisa was, I remember she spoke up, she was someone like that.
I, I don't think so.
That was called Lisa.
Lisa, this, the, the engineer, you can't nothing to do with him coming in, right?
No, I didn't know, I didn't know anything about it.
So Paula, I think, got him to come in, but I'm not sure what, what she was asking him to come in to do, but evidently he went out and looked at the tank. And then he looked at the coroner project, but I was under the impression that, when you guys first talked about a kid, that he had a plan for the coroner, and all he needed to do was find an engineer to tell us where to put it.
That's, that's the way, yeah.
But after talking with, with, uh, Trey, uh, he, evidently, we were supposed to take, eh, put out or advertise for an engineer. If he was here, he could do an emergency proposal to us for the coroner. But he is not going to be willing to do the coroner that Bobby Kidd suggested for us to do. If, if we use him, he's going to do, design a coroner for us that is going to pacify T D Q C. And, and what I understand correctly, Lisa, if I'm, if I'm saying anything wrong here, because you, you listen to everybody this too. That if, if we contract with him, which he draws his coroner up, and we're expecting to spend what we, we approved twenty thousand dollars, but he's come back with a, a ten thousand dollar price for, for the engine. But if he, if we contact with him and he sends his plant in to T D Q C, then, and he's proposing a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty thousand dollar coroner, then that's what we better be prepared to do. Because, because when he sends that in, he is at that point the official expert.
When, when I talked to Bobby Kidd, he told us we'd do that for a while, I was trying, and then all we had to do was get an engineer to tell us where, places to get the best saturation I'm able to learn for the tank. So that's where that came from, and then we're talking about, we had to buy it and all that stuff, but then since then, you've talked to us.
Well, that's what I'm telling you, is after, after he there, he told us he would send a proposal for a engineering project. And I was under the impression that it was going to be for the coroner that Mr. Kidd, like you said, he was going to tell us where to put it.
That's my understanding too.
Well, when I got this contract back, and I saw in the very first paragraph that it was closer to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand, and his, his price was ten thousand. I said, I got to throw a flag over this, this is not, you know, we didn't bring that, we didn't, we can't look forward to that, so. I called out a kid, and I asked him, I said, here's what's happened, I mean, tell me where we are, what, give me your impression of what's going on. And he said that the situation that we're in with T D Q C, and his, after knowing what this guy is doing, is that he would recommend for us to absolutely be disconnected from that tank down north.
Yes, sir.
He said, I can't tell you one hundred percent guarantee that that's your problem, but I can one hundred percent guarantee you that it's not going to hurt. And he said, there's a high probability that that could remedy your problem on these side of town. And he said, I, I will, what did he say? He said, I will not contract with anybody to do anything until you get loose from that tank on the north side of town. And give it about thirty days, I'm sorry, and give it about thirty days and do your testing, and see if the nitrates come down in the chlorine saturation or whatever, that level that force will be. He said, then if done, you can back up and punt, but at that point, you can also, if T D Q C comes in and says, well, that was one of the recommendations that they highly recommended in this letter that needed to be done. Well, at least we made an effort to do one of the things that they thought we need to do, one of the very first things we need to do.
Let me ask you this, with the amount of water that we're pumping into the swimming pool, right, we pump that water into the swimming pool, the river that we're pulling off water out of, put the new water back in, right? So, but how do we get, how do, how do we get an accurate reading for thirty days if we're pulling off of?
This is what has to be, this is what they recommended to do right now.
Yes.
If we, if we don't do anything.
How many downsides did they want us to go through?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty thousand, that's right.
And, uh. Right. Well, but I think that there's some confusion about, we might not even need a coroner.
Right.
Mr. Kidd, Mr. Kidd and Brian and, uh, Mr. Handey, Dusty, Dusty from the concrete, he had, uh, a set of maps that showed a lot of those lines over there, and then Mr. Kidd sent in some other maps that show some other lines, and, you know, if you haven't been over there, everybody should really go look, that pump house that was the whole, there's two sets of pumps in there, the whole set of pumps is from when the water came in from the water farm out of King's High. And it was treated and coordinated over here, and then pumped back in into our local system, a whole area of greenbelt. And evidently, one of those valves, or two of those valves over there, there's water pouring out of, out of those valves over there, and there's a tremendous amount of pressure on them. And one of the check valves, I mean, you turn it, the pit cock on it, shoot the semen in it, and put the system, and that's where the water in the tank's coming from. And if the pressure gets low, we have a water leak, or we have a, have to turn the water tower, that that's what's sucking the water back out of the water, that tank over there, and it's getting back into the lines, and the first place it goes is back to the northeast part of town.
Right, that water is nasty coming out of that tank.
And, and Mr. Kidd said that with the nitrates and the, and, and, Mr. Wilson, you know more about this than anybody that's here, that it has to do with the saturation of chlorine, and the more, the more nasty the water is, the more chlorine it takes, and you.
It'll be a part of the test to kill our turf.
Right, so, right now, the, I would suggest, and, and I would suggest us do nothing with this engineering firm right now, pay for this, and pay for this whole project, and devote all our attention to getting this, disconnected, no matter what it takes over there. And I know that Brian's been digging and trying to locate the valves and the pipes, and, uh, the maps and Dusty had showed some huge meters over there that we had found, yeah, and, you know, there's just some things we still need to find. But I would suggest, find what we have to have, getting the pipes dug up, finding what size they are, find out what size clothes we need to get, how we need to get them, and give some notification to the general public that we're going to turn the water off on next Thursday, not that that's when we're going to do it, but we're going to turn the water off on a certain day, a certain time. Fill up your bat cups with water, get you some bottled water, whatever you need to do, it could take twelve hours, it could take twenty-four hours, you know, depending on what we get in there. But I think that until we do this, I think we're absolutely spinning our wheels on this.
I do want to go ahead on it, so, you're, you're a hundred percent right, but this, we didn't just shoot from our head on the twenty thousand dollars.
No, no.
I mean, that's, that's what we had to have, and, and we were losing money out here on, I'm sorry, we were losing money out here on, on the highway, and.
But, but the thing is, is that I think that he, at the time, he, when he suggested that, after talking to him the other day, he's in a whole different position of where he is. He is in a position of being the supplier, and he has a whole lot more leeway than we do, because.
We're kind of bound because of the fines.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're in trouble, I mean, we're in microspeller, he's not in a microspeller.
As long as that's fact still online, I mean, if you're not doing it, and you don't need to call it.
That's what I'm saying, right. I, I mean, I don't think he tried to mislead you, I think he was actually trying to help us, but I think that once everybody realized where we really, really are, you know, we all want to try to do it quick and fast and simple, but I don't think there is a quick, fast, and simple, and the thing was about that water system.
You get that water out of the tank and stop it from putting back in the system, you can't put another one in there.
That's what I'm saying, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Did you have anything you wanted to hear?
Well, he's right about that, and, and Ryan's on that project right now, they're, they're, they can't locate these things, because the drawings that take out, where it may not be right, so I agree with the original drawings, that someone's come back and rewritten.
Right, right, and these, and these drawings show some addition, that they, evidently, they came in and built that other pump station to supply chloro out of that tank. And so that's, this drawing, he had, he, he ordered them onto us, was right in there, seen these before, and we located some things off of these drawings that we didn't know were there. So, I mean, he, he's definitely trying to help us every way he can.
Well, that's, that's the key of getting that tank out of there first.
I think so too.
Because, like I said, you can't put a point back in the system, there are comments like, well, it's putting.
Well, let's get a motion on number four, and who's handling what you said, all right, then.
To table the engineer.
Yes, sir.
Until we find out, or until Mr. Wilson comes up with better, I think, how about that?
That's, that's, that's good, what you might.
I think it's two motions, right, I think it's one, two motions, one to not take any action on that, and another motion to, to follow the, the, what you recommended.
Yeah, okay, you have that emotion to, to table both titles, out on one and out on three. To number, I mean, I guess we could.
All right, so the most one thing, table one and three, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Have you got Lisa?
All right, so, number two, you, we already get on.
Does, does that require, I mean, does that require?
So.
I mean, why, you know, you can be, here's what, here's what, what I was, here was my train of thought, so, he can only, and, and don't hold this, I will get you on exact amounts on Monday when, when our book person's back.
He can approve, I, I want to say seven, and I can approve ten, or he can approve five, and I can approve seven, which I can approve about, you, you, you tell them the money's there, and that's what we need, but, so we, I don't know if we're going to need, what we're going to need for, but, I mean, I guess we have to come back for.
Look, do, do you just want to open, approve, I mean, it's got to be done, we got to do it from that one, I mean, and it's soon to be, fast to be. So, I, I'll make a motion to fix the water tank, to isolate the water tank. And we'll just leave it open in, that's, is he with you?
Yeah, the, the actual expense of stopping the flow is not going to be much, finding the time ever to be in a parallel, locate the tank, but once you get, get your family, uh, uh, a high dollar, uh, fit out and delete. That's, that's the first step, find it, locate it, prepare it all, then we can proceed, whatever it is there that we need, and I would like to, like, make a, I don't, really, I'm not really sure. They turned shut with the water that they're supposed to, and so far they have, and we should.
So, so, have you want to, you want to just dollar it out, I mean, not a big scene there.
That's up to y'all, that's, it's not going to be a tremendous expense, so, I think as well within the normal range of, okay?
I, I think it's, I think it's just a normal operation.
You have a leak, that needs to be fixed.
It's just like the wood, if you got, if you're trying to somewhere, you got, you got to find it, fix it, and it takes, takes, if you think thing, to fix that.
If you require a little time or whatever, I think it needs to be, okay?
So, motion to make to isolate the water tank, uh, Mr. Johnson, say it, Cindy, on Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Lisa?
All right, let's go to, number four, considering the hire and motion to overturn.
Well, uh, we met, uh, Mr. Berger, Andrew Berger, day before yesterday, he was going to get his pay, he, he's.
Is that a wire?
Yeah. He's, he is, what, people is willing to pay the job for the same thing, but he wants to have, he said that the contract that we had before was too open ended for both sides. He said, the way that contract was written, it could be detrimental to the city, or it could have been detrimental to the attorney. So he wants to have a definition of what's covered, and after we left there, and we had a call that we thought this was going to be much cheaper, I thought whether I should give this money to be in court today. And, but I couldn't call back, I didn't need to today, so.
I think we can go ahead and make a motion passive and sign it off.
And, 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 and.
If you're, if you're, if you're ready, go. The motion is, uh, hire Mr.?
Andrew.
Andrew Berger. For signing out. And sign, sign moving on the track.
And, and like, he's going to, he, he asked, I said, furnish him, I said, how get a better, why don't you furnish others, what it means to be a lawyer, and, and, and a great piece.
Yeah, I think we both agree, he's the attorney, we're the attorney, yeah, that, uh, he'll be most active, he's, he's, he, we sit down for a long period of time, and we take the whole thing out straightforward, both sides, and, uh, and, and ask him what his recommendation was.
And, and we inform them, we inform them that we anticipate in the future going forward, that his contact person is going to be Mr. Wilson, or whomever occupies that office. That there's not going to be any communication from each individual council person, because.
That would run real weird.
That would be ridiculous, and then you got six different opinions that's what you're going to say, so everything needs to go through Mr. Wilson, if he had any contact with the department, and that's going to make, or it should be.
So, a motion was made to hire Mr. Andrew Berger for the same price, and once the new contract arrives, will be signed when it arrives. All right, second?
Yes, sir. And his dad also reiterated that if he had any issues, that he was very open to assist.
Okay, awesome, so, all in favor of, uh, Mr. Andrew Berger, say aye?
Aye.
Both?
Lisa?
Okay, let's move right along. Uh, this one, considering the full all banking information, lines, lines of credit updates, updates as needed, the bank has asked that we go back and do it the way that's always been done, instead of the way it, prior to us getting here, and the way it's always been done, we say mayor administrator, or council member administrator, instead of saying council member Jackson, administrator Wilson, and that way, once we sign this, these documents, it, until somebody else.
So we need a motion to. Okay, I made the motion that we update the banking information to be where it has mayor or city manager, not a name individual. Name of the position is still individual.
So talking about the, the banking information, at one of the previous council meetings, you were talking about you have CDs, and you were, you were going to change the logo from just a savings account to an interest-bearing account, and I own their offer of business at home, okay, but the banks here don't pay anything as far as interest on their accounts, and you could go outside of one and find a bank that's going to be a little more chill, where that money's going to make money. For example, I moved the grandson's savings account from American National Bank and Trust, where he was getting point one five percent interest. where that money's gonna make money, um, for example, I moved the grandson savings account from American National Bank and Trust where he was getting point one five percent interest. We went to lending club and now he's getting right at five percent. So, I think to make that money work for us in a better capacity and to actually be generating some growth, it wouldn't be a bad idea to look outside of, of local banks to see if we could find somewhere else to grow it.
I think that's a good idea, but I think it's really slippery slope, because you gotta realize that he's meant to pay a tremendous amount of CD property taxes, which kinda, I mean, it's a slippery slope, I think.
You know what, John Hurst, we have this argument all the time about do business at home, do business at home, do business at home, but at some point, you have to have some give and take on both sides, and if a bank wants to do business at home, they bank with them, then they need to either commit to meeting what a, a competitor's gonna offer as far as the interest on a savings account, or they have to give it up.
I, I worry about having, we need a, a line of credit, and we can walk over to one of these banks and we can get a line of credit where they need to cause lending creditors to say, who? Lending?
Well, they're actually on the truth, but.
But I mean, you don't understand, is, is you have a whole lot better relationship with your local, and, and I'm not hundred percent saying that's what we have to do, but I just think it's, we need to really be careful, I think, to accomplish this slippery slope.
We, we'll get you to push them, one of the times.
Yeah, let me do some investigating, find out, we, we try basically what you're talking about, when we first moved up here, we went to bank over here and started an account there, and we got to find out that, that they did not meet our needs. Their interest rate was not good, their, their charges, corporate checks, that, that just were not good, and we, so we just investigated where we could take our money and use it to the best, make that the best return, and that's what we've done, we don't pay any taxes. And I can investigate, find out what they will do for us and what we can do to the copier, dial machine, or for work, or Amarillo, Lowak, anywhere, there's all sorts of banking, which we have to find out, and, and, and we'll question that same deal, you know, hey, we're gonna put our thirty thousand dollar savings account in your bank over there, we won't know what kind of interest rate you're, hey, I need, we may need ten thousand dollar line of credit to do this, but probably, how are you gonna handle that?
How?
Gonna find out all this information and we can operate the account.
Okay.
So, most of them made, they made an info to be worded, uh, as position, position, not individual. And that was made by Mr. Jackson?
My second. And I just asking discussion of that, you know, I've been involved in, 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 uh, in, uh, in this situation with nonprofit five oh one cities, and we had officers in there, and we had like twenty-five hundred members in there, we had officers, and, uh, and, and the way it was set up is the officers, one with myself and one with my wife, and we opened the account with the, with the credit union, and five years later, we moved to Quark, and, you know, and all, and to get that, to get that account in the nation, new people took over us, we had to drive all the way back to San Diego and remove our names from there, because of our names, and, and, and new our names, and then they had to put their hands on it, so get, like you said, it's in the name of the position. If that position changes, this, it doesn't change that, it's easy just to do that, and you just sign them there, so, I think that's the only way to go, which is what it is.
All right, all in favor of the updated right handful, say aye?
Aye.
Both?
It's a time delay, huh?
So she wasn't on?
No, she.
It's like Shane, like, it's a time delay.
All right, okay, next one, consider proof change in the network, user password, that's how long, that you.
Well, I, I, you know, and, and I'm just wondering, I, I came in here and I needed to access the computer, you know, we have a new city administrator, and he's, he's been here for a week now, and he still doesn't have his user password, and, uh, and, and so it's been a lot of confusion with respect to how do we go use the passwords, change, okay, and who's responsible for it, and what it is, and I need to get onto the, to the computers to look at the, the, the cameras, to see what I, I've got twice, maybe three times many loads of one out, and I'm getting paid for it in my job, this has, and that's, and that's, and that's, I need to look at those cameras, they're taking pictures of that to see what's going on during that twenty-four hour, and, uh, and I don't have, I don't have a username, I don't have a, we have a password.
So, I don't even have a computer, so, I mean, that would be, Mr. Wilson has to pull whatever he may, or you can sit down and look at it, but we don't need to have a computer. You really can't get on a computer in, um, Maris office because personnel records, and then if you go back in this one, there's more HR stuff in that one, so technically, the only one, you really haven't access to.
Don't want to access.
Number four, the, the part of that one, uh, that would be the one, that would say the one, could be access, because the only time they need to use that is when, that we're emergency.
I think, I think we're kinda stepping on your toes, though.
Well, what, what we can do, or what we can consider is, is have an A computer up here that the council can use, but have it limited to what that can be handled with. You can, we can, we can, you don't need personnel records, you don't need, uh, this different bank accounts and all of it, and, and limit what your access is, you can only internet do certain things, but certain things can opt in, and I think that would be, that would, that would safeguard everything else that we, that we do have, it would be private, and allow, allow y'all access to what you need.
So, you have, I'll make five computers.
But that thing was, was, was that, is that, is, is council members, if we had our, our, our name, uh, on the website, and then people wanted to, if, if we wanted to email someone in our capacity as a council member, uh, whatever we're doing to email them, to have a username and, and, and a password for it to go through the system, then we would be doing business with them as, as the council. This, as, now, when I, when I was interacting with that engineer on the road, I had to give him a personal email, uh, to get to correspond with him, and Paul put me on this, as an additional there.
So, what you're saying is, is it, you, you want us to have a city email address, like, Big Young's or CityMark.com or wherever, and.
Just a fellow council member at, on the, I should have.
However, you, I mean, is that.
One, one thing you could do, on your, on your city website, it'll be a, have a list of councilmen, with, everybody out here, and have the city's address, and then when, if they needed to contact you, they would say, Big Young from care of, this mail address, it would come to our computers here, and we would see that you got there. You know, we, you know, I pull up a, a email address on there, and your name is, your, your, your name pops up, this is your email, I'm gonna pray that I give it to you.
I just don't wanna step on your toes, I don't, you've got, you've got the ball, so, I mean, I, I.
You know, the council needs to have access to some information, and some information they don't, and to have someone contact you at the city, in care of the city, I think would be good, because that would get you, that would, that would let them know that you're connected actually with the city, or if, if I'm using my personal email, they would say, well, you know, who are you, what, what are you doing?
Okay, so if we're gonna do that, which we did at, at the last place I worked, on our network, we had a, it was like a generic comments or complaints app, so and so, where you could publish that address on the city website. Anybody at home on their phone or home computer, if they were having an issue, if they had questions or concerns, they could send that email to that address, and it goes directly to the city, which is gonna serve two purposes, one is gonna say you have a water leak in your backyard, work orders get lost, right?
That's right.
But if you're emailing it to the, to care of the city, I have a water leak, this is my address, blah, 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 now you've got a paper trail, you're sending it with.
You know how many, uh, how many Thursday?
Boy, what's Marjorie's extra name?
I don't think this is something for a motion, or anything, I think, I think it's. Well, I think that you say that.
All right.
You know, it's like, it's like you interacting with the engineer, okay, you had to do it on your personal stuff, it didn't come through, through the, through the city quantity and program, long-term documentation, that this corresponds with the city between, you know, your position as the liaison to, to, in, in that area, so that's why I think there's, there's, communication, I'm not sure.
But isn't that something too that we, that could be part of the contract we mentioned, the newer, the new network provider for me? They could actually build in those features into a desktop that says, okay, council members have access, and these particular programs and files are accessible, these are not?
Yeah.
And you could, you could further set it up with some other desktop access, where you just VPN or put in your, uh, you have a set of credentials, you sign in remotely from home, where you could look at it whenever you want to, but you only have access to.
That's right, yeah, you would have access to.
Is that who needs to get to your password?
No, Shane, Shane was the one, and I did not know that you did not have a password for Shane.
That one I discovered, I left it on.
Shane is our local, uh, IT guy, Shane Lance, I mean, he doesn't have, he can't go into the system and change things that, Cisco or, I can't remember the company, but he can, he can, so like, he, he said, he changed my password, he can, he can change yours.
Also, he has access, he can set up, he can set up access, but he can't change program.
I gotta find out two TCQs, which I don't matter, I don't have access to any of it now, I tried three times, and they're calling for a password.
He probably doesn't have that.
He may, uh, Brian may have, but I called, Brian, I didn't get it.
So, is, is NetEssentials still our internet computer provider right now? So, after the change, whichever way we go, they will be the provider at that point?
Yeah, and they're also the administrator, absolutely.
And they're all Shane, we have a picture.
Yeah, well, all he is is, is just like, and I don't know how, how he is, but that's, I mean, that's something to change, or what, or that current, that he is the guy that can change passwords, and he got, he got my password, and.
I, I don't know what a period of issue he had with the provider, but he's just like an IP, I'll let him sound, he, he, our IP didn't have.
See, ours is Gmail, so the mail that we use, like mayor at CityFarm.Gmail, right, so, I like that idea of Sentri or whoever, instead of Gmail, I don't know why, just security-wise, I would say, with all the tries that I get, my hotmail address, Gmail address, I'm gonna, I would take them, but, I mean, that's just the way it is now.
I think what does that have to do with anything you do as a non-trainer?
There, there's something that, that probably needs to be discussed in one of the next meeting, we can't do here, but there's, the contracts we have with, uh, Sentri or whatever it is now, that are, we're not getting what we're supposed to get out of contract, so we need to look at, or renegotiate that, and it may be that we want to negotiate a different setup with Sentri that we have now, because we're, they got, we got a contract from Tower, everybody knows this, and they're not with enough, they're in contract, the folks, the city all downtown, we, uh, and they're, and they're not doing that good, so, some work between now and the next council meeting, we're gonna have this discussion as to what you're supposed to be doing, and why you're not doing it, and we wanna know, we, we can keep provisions back in there, we can have what you're supposed to do for them, and maybe we can use this, move as the way it is, you know, to make, can bargain a better deal to Sentri or Sentrol.
And I think, I think, I think you really need to look at those other two contracts, because I think that it's gonna have to be, I think we can table that again.
If you've got contracts in there that, they're just flat, you need to think of that.
We don't have to do things in October, right?
It's in October, it's in February.
But it, but it's, we don't, I, I mean, that's, actually, you don't have to make plans.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you, you begin it all out, so, the, the work in there, moving down that.
All right, that brings us to our last one, uh, consider approved personnel changes and additions.
Yeah, that one, I, I, you know, uh, two things I mean is that, uh, Maury is, 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 has some problems with her elbow, and, and I think she came and talked to, did she come talk to you about she needed some assistance in, some help there?
Well, I don't think we can do this, but I'm just saying, I don't think we can even talk, I, I'm not, I'm just saying this, I think, I need to. I don't think we can do that, you're gonna sit in the next, you're gonna have to stop.
Okay, all right.
Number one. Number two, right, she didn't.
If she has an issue, she can jump up, but, we're working out, and a- anything that, that needs council approval, uh, we should go along.
Like, let me put this plus anyway, you're gonna go on actually with her, and she, you should, you should, so.
But there's other people in her office that can help, aren't feeling with the others that she's from.
I just wanna make sure that we got, yeah.
It's all on him, he better, I mean, you, and if she's not here, and she called.
That, that you have, I mean, we gave him power to fire, if he needs somebody else, he can power them with absolute consulting, so.
But right now, it, it is it, right? Because like I say, she's not gonna interview that, and, and I understand physical problems, but we need to have some backup, if we can fall back on it, it's a, it's a worry.
So, you can make that all between now and later, and without us having to.
That's great, 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 great.
Absolutely.
Captain, can I ask a question, a quick one, before we do, we're talking about the water for the swimming pool, and it's not how much we're running, is there any possible way we can start letting people water their grass?
So, the way it would explain to me now, uh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, the way it would explain to me, and, and he, he backed out on this, is if we lift the stage four, then we get fined, but we can dump it out on the ground all day, is that?
Well, it, the, the drought that then that you planned, we basically had, handed down to us from, uh, anyway, they, they didn't say we want, we insist that you do this, but they recommended that we build a special, uh.
And, and the water we're putting in the pool is not from Greenbelt, I mean, it's from Greenbelt, but TQC City will do, that's what I'm saying, ask us if, you know, what we.
Oh, you need to, in, in all water systems, they're pretty much the same, when you get to a certain point, and like those get to a certain point, TCQ is that city.
Right.
You, you say, well, yeah, nine yards is not, well, tough, you know, them here we yard it out, it's not, they, they're, they're out for the safety, fire safety, drinking water safety, you know, they won't be sure that, that the water is safe, and the water that's there is usable for that purpose, and if you go out here and you, and you, you pull the stage four off and say, okay, you can start watering the yard again, well, the next thing you go out there and water it, and you gotta be firing the TCQ, says, I told you to keep stage four at that, just like they say, you don't pull out a wall of water, no, just until you get your order to deliver up to the standard, and they, they, it says that.
Some of the times, is it Greenbelt ones, times, or TCQ?
TCQ.
They would find us if we.
Well, you, 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 you have to have something come up to create an issue, and what, when they recommend these stage four things, they say these things are what can cause an issue, and you're, they don't say we're going to find you if you come off stage four, but if you ever have an issue that comes up, they, they say, we recommended to you that you did not do this, and you did it anyway, so.
My opinion of that pool was that, when, when it first came up, is they said, you're gonna get rid of a hundred fifty thousand gallons, well, I'd not like to see so damn green down there, we put it in swimming pool, if we did have a big fire, and if we did, if we only had half the water, we'd make it out of the pool, so we're really not getting rid of it.
And water in the pool gets pouring in on something, that's not gonna be correct. You've got a Florida, it's backwards, it's never like that.
But, I mean, even after we get the, the pools built, and there's still not enough flush of water, could, is there any way that I do something that, instead of just.
Could, is there any way that I do something, uh, instead of just wasting it, I have some totes or something, you know, that somebody can take them on?
I don't know, I love.
Or that we're getting trouble, or?
There's nothing says progress, you get full.
Yeah.
When we're, when we're very heavy lines, like, like, and we could, they start back to full, as long as we've got enough water in the pool, to put water, to fill, to, to, to pour, and all that. And we can gradually build that pool up with water, just charging for, for flush water. Because it, uh, it, I, I guess it'll hold, but that's.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, thank you. The rest is, can we supplement it with well water?
Yeah. But you have to warn anybody, it has its own, it's like a, it's own system, you stress, your water has nothing to do with that.
So, would be, uh, uh, in the ground water tower, that would save a bit?
Well, for fire courses, it could be, yeah, we suck water out of swimming pools all the time, I go down home where it is, and we had a party, and we couldn't, you know, could get a week of, one, get for one, I know we suck water out of.
There is that water, it's drinking water, right?
Now, it can, it, it would never, it's not hot.
Close house, they were swimming, uh, don't worry.
You, you know, the water gets, tornado water is a lot of, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, a free, so you're, you're way on more pouring in that water than you ever did. So, it, and, and I guess in a dire disaster, it's gonna be reprocessed, and you, but it's for normal, it, it, it will really be, uh, reprocessed.
Because you need extra hardcore.
Yeah. You're way on, uh, you've got hundred fifty swig in there, and you don't want to skip to the, that pouring has to be up to the, I would, I would, to compensate, because like, there's.
Well, I think we hit all number seven, if anything else, take now, if there's hope to do. All right.
Lisa. Lisa. Rita. Thank you.
All right, a little card.
About five fifty-five. Oh, hey, man, that's great.
How fast.
You don't like that? That's what's here, that's, that's here, hallelujah.
Amen.